Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Here.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
All right, we have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, approval of minutes of council meeting held on March 15th, 2012. A motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to the consent agenda. Item three, set a date, May 3rd, 2012, for a public hearing on ordinance 120404, amendments to the official street map. Item four, set a date, May the 3rd, 2012, for a public hearing on ordinance 120405, amendments to the zoning code, section 207, general sign regulations relating to billboards. Item five, consider awarding bids for transformers from the electric department. A motion for approval on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item six, consider resolution 120405, adopting the Putnam County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you say, this resolution will adopt the local hazard mitigation plan for Putnam County and the city of Cookeville, the towns of Allgood, Baxter, and Monterey. FEMA requires that every jurisdiction nationwide adopt a plan to be eligible for federal hazard mitigation funds and disaster declaration monies. Since the original requirement for the adoption of these plans in 1995, all five jurisdictions in Putnam County have jointly prepared a plan, and all five jurisdictions must approve the plan for it to be approved by FEMA. The plan was developed by a planning team that was had representatives from all five jurisdictions. The purpose of the plan is to assist in the elimination or reduction of losses of life or property damage as a result of a hazard, and this is accomplished by identifying mitigation actions to address various hazards, and the plan addresses natural hazards, including winter storms, tornadoes, flooding, landslides, and earthquakes, and also it addresses man-made or technological hazards such as the transportation of hazardous materials, fixed facilities. And fixed facilities include such things as meth labs, and it also risks terrorism, transportation accidents such as air crashes, bus crashes, and also incidents at the dam. For each of these hazards, a risk assessment is completed and a mitigation strategy is developed. As previously stated, this plan must be adopted, and it's required by FEMA, and we'd recommend for approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
How often do you have to have this updated?
Approximately every five years.
Five years.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hey, just actually, being first, this first time this has came through, placed in front of me, I found this, this plan very comprehensive and very relieved to know that this, these sort of things are in place. I don't, I don't think the average Cookevillian or Putnam County resident knows that we have these things available and rate, or these plans available and ready to go, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing, so.
It's somewhat being prepared.
I just, I just appreciate the city of Cookeville and Putnam County putting these things together, getting ready for any kind of whatever may come up. Thank you, James.
Kind of like what Vice, Vice Mayor Epps said, and I wanted to point out what Sharon Womack, the deputy director of Putnam County EMA, what she said about it. She said, notice I said, didn't say if needed, I said when needed, because disasters will continue and we need to be protected, and that's true. Nobody ever thinks it will happen, but it does happen, as we've seen, so this is a very comprehensive and, and a lot of work went into that, it looked like, because it was a pretty thick booklet.
Yeah, and I, to be honest, Ken Young with the planning department has spent the primary amount of talent, and it's not me, so I'm not taking any credit for this. There were a lot of people involved, especially the city. Ken Young was our representative.
Any other questions? Questions? Any questions, comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, item seven, consider reappointment of representative to the Putnam County Tax Equalization Board, sponsors Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, the want to reappoint Judy Maynard. She was appointed last year to fill an unexpired term, and it's time for that full term now, and she's agreed to serve. I would recommend her approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments from the council?
And she chooses, she has already been approached and wants to do this.
Yes, that's correct.
And willing to do this.
It's always good to have volunteers.
All right, any other questions, comments?
No.
Anything from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item eight, consider appointment to the Cookeville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, sponsor is Mayor Swallows. Dr. Jeff Gleason, who is currently serving on the board, hospital board, will be resigning, actually has resigned from the board effective April the 1st, because he has accepted a position as a full-time employee at the hospital as chief medical officer, which is something that the hospital has needed for a while. And so by doing that, he can no longer serve on the board, because he is a, an employee of the hospital, so he has resigned, meaning his position is open. It's kind of out of turn a little bit, and they have talked to Dr. Jason Nolan, asked him if he would serve. He's very willing to serve, very capable, and they're, we are asking for city council approval for Dr. Jason Nolan to serve out Dr. Jeff Gleason's term on the hospital board.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, for his approval.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments from the council?
And he'll serve out that term till 2017?
I believe you are right.
2017.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one more sheet.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, Dr. Nolan actually is here. Wave hi, yeah, there he is. Dr. Nolan approached me at the hospital and mentioned if he felt like it was appropriate for him to come. I said, yes, please, by all means come, because I think a lot of the city council has not had an opportunity just to interface with him. They've heard many good things about Dr. Nolan, and it's just an opportunity, I think, for, for the city council, for you guys to just introduce yourselves and have a chance to meet him. And, and again, I thank you for coming, Dr. Nolan, because I know this, I know, I don't, speaking for the council, we are very interested in what goes on at the, at the hospital, at the hospital, and are very interested, interested in what happens, and appreciate you being, you being here for us, so thank you very much.
We always appreciate people who want to serve.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Dr. Nolan?
All right.
We appreciate you serving, we really do. All right, no more questions, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item nine, consider awarding a change order to the sewer rehab contract, Water Quality Control Department, sponsors Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, on November 17th, 2011, city council approved a sewer contract for $295,000 with American Infrastructure Technologies Corporation for sewer rehab work that we annually do. We annually try to budget $300,000 to $500,000 per year to try to replace some of the older sewer lines in town. This year, this year's contract, we had anticipated that there would be 15 sewer laterals that we'd need to be repaired using a no-dig technology, and 18 laterals that would be repaired using just dig up and replace. The estimate, this estimate was based upon prior projects we've done, based on the number of laterals per footage of main line. Once we got the, once the contract came in, televised the sewer line, provided us with the, the video disc, our internal engineers reviewed the tapes and made a determination that there was more laterals that need to be done in this section than we had anticipated in the original contract. So we're here requesting approval of a change order to rehabilitate a total of 17 laterals using the no-dig technology and 35 using dig and replace. This change order would be accomplished using the unit prices that were originally bid in the original contract, and it would add $35,828 to the original contract price and an additional 30 days to the contractor to make those completions. That's the original contract, or original bid tab that you guys approved. Here's a couple of pictures of what we're talking about. The sections of line we're working in now is clay pipe. Clay pipe is good, good, but it's fragile, and you get clay, clay gets cracks, cracks get roots, roots run and, and, and block up things, so we've got to get those things corrected, and we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. No motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Questions, comments from the audience?
Was that a tech pom-pom that was?
That was.
That's what it looked like.
Well, that little tree root by your house that grew all the way in the line, it just exploded.
All right, no more questions, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 10, consider authorizing the electric department director to execute a joint pole attachment agreement with Tennessee Technological University, sponsors Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, seems like I'm bringing these more often lately, but as I explained to you in the work session Monday, this agreement is with Tennessee Tech. A little different than some of the others I brought, because some of the requirements that the state of Tennessee places on Tennessee Tech, and had Mr. Rader, our city attorney, review all of those, and he added some additional language for the city's protection. He and I both are in approval, I think this is a good agreement. You probably have the agreement before you, or you should have, and in that agreement there's also a route, it's basically running from the university services building at Ninth and Dixie, along Ninth Street to just west of Allen Avenue, turning north, crossing 10th Street, and terminating at the old Prescott Middle School. And that cable will provide both telephone and data services for that building from the Tennessee Tech system. Annual attachment fee for that cable will be like all the others, $12.52 per pole, per year. The licensee Tennessee Tech will be required to pay for any make-ready work that has to be done. For instance, if other cables have to be shifted up or down, they pay for that. That's in the agreement, and the initial term of the agreement is five years, automatically renewable annually thereafter. Recommend your approval, and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions from the council?
Just a comment, Tennessee Tech is a good partner to work with, and I'm glad that we're able to, to do this for them, or to work with them.
Definitely. We have a really good relationship with Tennessee Tech, as I know the city does, and it's always a pleasure to work with them.
Yes, sir. Just a general comment, I've been, most of us being new here, except for Alma, on the council, we, this, this poll, these additions to the polls have been kind of new for us, and I, I just want to say, I just want to say, every time I, we see this, lines being added to a poll, it means some sort of progress, some sort of industry or something going on, fiber optic cable, something going on that increases productivity or economics this area, so I'm glad to see it. I just hope we have poles tall enough to.
And they pay us for it.
Yeah, well, I hope we have poles tall enough to cover all this, so just keep.
Yeah, keep selling spokes.
Just keep selling, selling spokes, yeah.
Who are you going after next?
I'm not sure yet. No, these are requests. One thing that's going to help us in the future, I think, is, is the fiber cable. It's much smaller than some of the other cables that you've seen for the last 30 or 40 years, especially along Jefferson Avenue, is a pretty good example. All those massive cables, you know, sometimes four in a row.
Yeah.
Those will eventually be replaced by a fiber cable, hopefully the size of one of your fingers, so saving grace, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Any other comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, this is part of the meeting. We're here from officers, councilmen, and city manager with item 11, receive the city's financials for 7-1, 2011 through 2-29, 2012, and sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, I just, I have a few slides to go over with you. I'll be brief, my comments, and anytime you stop me, I'll try to answer your question. If I, if I don't have the answer tonight, I'll certainly look it up and get back to you. Just in, in summary, I'm going to start with the general fund, and again, from July 1 through, this is as of February 29th, end of February, eight months through the fiscal year, we have received in $16,234,000 in revenue, we'd budgeted $21 million, so that's 77% of our revenue to date, which is, which is good. Property taxes are due at the end of February, we've collected 98% of the budgeted amount for property tax. Just to point out a couple of other line items in there real quick, our cable TV franchise, that one's actually going to come in, right now it doesn't look like it, it's going to come in over budget, which is good, it's going to come in about $10,000 or $15,000 more than what we had budgeted. Our, it's a new tax, the wholesale liquor tax as well, that's going to come in maybe $15,000 to $20,000 over budget. We budgeted $300,000, we're at $234,608 on that line item right now, and I think, that's about the only thing I wanted to point out on that page as far as revenue, but again, 77% of revenue so far, and we should be roughly at 66%, just looking at on a monthly basis. So again, not $16,234,000 in revenue to date. On the expenditure side, everything looks good, the departments are within budget right now. Total operating expenses, 64% of budget right now, $13,378,000 is what's been spent to date. We have made transfers to the other funds, animal control fund, transfer $3,000 to the tree board fund, and we have transferred $250,000 to the state street aid, oh, sorry, state street aid fund for paving. So total operating expenditures, capital expenditures, and all the transfers to date, $14,174,000. So again, everything's right in budget with the general fund, the departments are on top of their budgets, and everything's looking good at this point. Moving on to the state street aid fund, again, these are, this report's kind of boring, everything's right in line with, which is where it should be, so.
Right in line is not boring, I promise you.
It's good. Worry's good.
We don't want excitement.
So, we've got $546,000 in revenue to date for the state street aid fund, that's primarily gasoline tax, that's what supports that fund. We have expenditures, five, operating expenditures of $541,000. We have some capital expenditures, which is, relates to improvements we made at Walnut and Jackson Street, the turn lanes over there. Total expenditures to date, including those improvements on Walnut and Jackson and Old Bridge Road and Old Sparta Road, $712,000. We did budget a deficit in this fund this year, but again, this fund's right on track in the expenditure line item as well. Our solid waste fund is $1,115,000 in revenue, which is 70% of the budgeted revenue in that line item. We have expenditures to date, right at 67% of expenditures, or total operating expenditure, $763,566. And total expenditures, including capital, we purchased a side load, side load truck this year, and total expenditures, including capital, $1,130,000. Again, everything is right in line with where it should be. Our drug fund, used for drug education and other police special purchases there, we've got $20,043 in revenue, we've expended $21,801 so far to date.
That's the chief's mad money, isn't it?
That's some mad money for the police department. Animal control fund is looking really, really good at this point. We have total revenue, including transfers from the general fund and support from all the, Allgood, Putnam County, Monterey, and Baxter for the animal shelter. We have total revenue, including transfer from the general fund, of $199,751. And we spent $140,824 to date. Donations are up, we've, we've budgeted $21,000 in donations, we've already received $27,000 in donations, so the animal shelter's looking really good right now. Our economic development fund is, we had budgeted, we've received revenue so far to date, $2382,000, the economic development funds, supported by property tax. We've got 4 cents, the tax rate goes into the economic development fund. That line item you see that says intergovernmental, $2102,000, that's Putnam County's support for the expenses out at the industrial, industrial park. Everything we're doing with the Highlands Business Park, where all those expenditures are paid through the economic development fund, and that's the county share of that, those expenses coming back to us. So total revenue in that fund, $2382,652, and expenditures to date, $4263,660. As you can see, $4117 is the Highlands Business Park expenditures there. Our general obligation debt service funds, where we pay all the payments on any of the city's bonded debt or notes that we have outstanding, is supported from various taxes, property tax, and state sales tax money that comes back from the state, we, that's part of the revenue items for general obligation debts. We have $2321,311 in revenue to date, and this fund looks a little different, but it's, everything's right in line where it should be. We spent $605,000, the bond payments on these aren't, the, most of the bond payments aren't due till May, so those will be paid next month, and so then everything will kind of get back in line there. Interest on our variable rate debt is still well below 1%. We budget that each year around 4.5% to 5%, so we budget higher in case the, the market conditions change, but right now, everything for the last couple of years in that fund, the, those variable rate loans have been well below 100, 1% on those rates, so everything's looking good in the debt service fund right now. I'll move over to the utilities, and again, with water department, everything is right in line with budget. They've received 66% of their revenue, budgeted revenue, they've got $9,171,000 in operating revenue, total revenue of $9375,756. Their expenditures, our operating expenditures are below budget right now, they're at 63% of their expenditures, and they've spent $6606,841 in operating expenditures, capital $1,668 to date, so total expenditures right now, $9144,539 in the water department. The electric department, same thing, revenue is, operating revenue, $36,838,000. Got expenditures to date, including debt service payments, their equipment, materials, everything, $39,342, which is 63% of their budgeted amount. So again, nothing there that, that's out of the ordinary or that's of concern at this point. The gas department, little bit different story. As we all know, the winter, we haven't had much cold weather this year, so that has affected the sales for the gas department. Gas department has $6301,000 in revenue at this point. We budgeted $11 million, or total revenue, we budgeted $11,530, so we're at 55% of that. Now, part of that is consumption, because of the weather, but a big part of that, too, is gas prices are down, so as gas prices come down, our rates fall, which affects the revenue as well. But again, I don't really have any real concerns with the gas department. I think by the time fiscal year is over with, it will be a positive net income for the gas department. It'll be small, but there will be a net income, I believe. The expenditure side of the gas department, things are okay on the expenditure side, no problems there. We've got total expenditures to date, $6664, operating expenditures were $6144, which are 60% of the budget, so we're, we're under budget there, and again, that's primarily because gas prices are lower than what they were when we put the budget together a year ago. The last fund I have for you to, to look at is just the employee insurance fund. Revenue in that fund is from employees that participate in the plan, and their premiums that they pay, plus what the city puts in that fund on behalf of the employees, and we've got $2229,000 in, in revenue for that fund to cover, cover health claims to date. Claims and premiums to date, $2193, 60% of our budgeted number. The claims right now, which I, I hate to bring this up or even, even look at it, but I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic right now, they're below budget right now. So 59% or right at 60% of claims based on what we had budgeted, so hopefully that trend will continue for the next four months this fiscal year. But again, looking back at last year, the last four months of the fiscal year, those claims really skyrocketed, those last four months. But anyway, I've got my fingers crossed, hopefully that will, this, this trend will continue this year. That's the last fund I've got. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer anything that you might have. Nothing?
Any questions?
You bore me out. You bore them to tears.
Bored them to tears, all right.
That's good.
It's not boring to us, though, is it?
All right.
I have one. On the, I guess it was the general, let me get to it. The total capital expenditures on the general fund?
Yes, 60,000.
No, the, so far we spent $478,000, we budgeted $1,478.
Total capital.
Yeah, total capital.
Total capital, not just, okay, yeah, in the general fund, I was thinking general department.
No, in the general fund, we, we still, we've got not, almost a million dollars left.
We do.
What's, what do we have out there?
Seventh Street is part of that. We budgeted $650,000 in the general fund, so $650,000 of that number is Seventh Street.
Okay.
All right, then there's other equipment that's on order right now, that's been approved, vehicles, service trucks, so there's a lot of items there.
But the big one is?
The big one is $650,000 for Seventh Street.
Okay, I thought that looked odd, okay.
And that project's got started a couple of weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken.
All right.
Thank you.
You ain't seen nothing yet.
Thanks, Mr. Davidson. All right, this is part of the meeting where we open, like to open the floor to hear from citizens and/or delegations, which ask that you come forward, state your name, who you're with, and hold it to three minutes if you can, so the floor is open. Anything anybody would like to speak, good, bad, ugly? All right. I think we have some visitors here, is that correct? Are you guys trying to get badges? What badges would this be?
We're with Troop 196 with the Boy Scouts, and they currently have three citizenship badges now, and these boys are working for their citizenship in the community.
Oh, okay.
It's a pleasure to be observing tonight.
Well, welcome, we're glad you came. It's open anytime, you can come back, not even for a badge. Well, anything from the council?
I know you probably are going to mention.
No, I'm going to let you.
There you go. You were afraid I was going to get upset if I.
No, no, it's, you have more skin in this game than, than I do.
This Saturday at 10 o'clock, we're going to have the official opening for Dogwood Park. I don't know if anybody, you know, I know a lot of people have been there. I was there Sunday evening, and my husband and I counted over 100 people in the park at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, it was just unbelievable. And at 10 o'clock on Saturday, we will officially open Dogwood Park, and it's, when you stand in the middle of it, it is hard to envision what it looked like four years ago. You know, it just is so beautiful, so I hope everybody comes out and. You know, it just is so beautiful, so I hope everybody comes out, and then afterwards, I can't remember what group is sponsoring an egg hunt, and all day long, there are activities in Dogwood Park, so please come out and enjoy your community park.
Thank you. Anyone else?
One other thing, and the following Saturday at Dogwood Park is going to be Doggabaloosa, where you can bring your dog, and you pay a fee, and you get to do all sorts of fun things with your dog.
Actually contests, I believe, right?
I'll be there with my dog.
I will, too.
Me, too.
I don't have a dog.
Yes, Saturday, Dogwood Park, that's, that's a very big event, there's going to be a lot of activities going on. I think the radio station is going to.
Yes, sponsor an egg hunt.
Be sponsored egg hunt, and they will be broadcasting remotely from the, from the park, so hope the weather holds off and everybody can come out. Anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.